Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councils will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. Kicking us off tonight, let's pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with all liberty, liberty, justice, and for all.
Okay, first things first, councils, any disclosures of conflict of interest, any conflict of interest of any of any of the votes that you'll take tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right along to the manager report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, I want to welcome some new staff members to the city. First, Alex Jones is a new patrol officer in our police department. Sarah Rodriguez is a new payroll and AP specialist in finance. And Emily Brooks is our new customer service representative at the front counter in City Hall. So we want to welcome all of them and wish them much success in their positions here with the city for many years to come. So welcome all. The Marston Road Bridge is now officially removed. CSX did remove that bridge, and there is a sort of giant chasm there at the end of the road. So as we've discussed, city staff are working on identifying potential funding sources to construct a pedestrian bridge over that span. Our city engineer, Andy Fearson, is also looking at some other examples around the state that we could model after and getting some feedback from other communities who have built similar bridges over former railroad spans. I wanted to thank everyone who came to my open office hours event a couple weeks ago in November. We had a really good turnout, a lot of new faces. We love our familiar faces also, but it was really nice to see a lot of new people come out to this one as well. And the next session will be on December sixteenth, three thirty to five thirty here in the City Hall Annex. And of course, all Waterville residents, local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns, or anything else you'd like to tell me about. I want to thank everyone who participated in the parade on Saturday night, a really great event, a great turnout. So thank you to all who organized that and to all who came out. Again, a really great downtown Waterville event, and we appreciate your participation. A reminder that the Taconic Bridge is going to be closed, fully closed, beginning on December sixteenth, and will run through June twentieth of next year. I want to put out again, we are looking for volunteers to staff our warming shelter in the event of emergencies or widespread power outages. If you're interested in volunteering to be shelter staff, please contact Teresa Crawford in the fire department or city administration, we'll get you to the right place. It is critical that we have these volunteers. They do make these facilities run in times of need. So if you are interested, please, please reach out to us. Lastly, I just want to, of course, remind everyone of our mass notification system. Lots of great information you can have there. I'm going to conclude the mayor's third favorite report now and turn it over to the mayor's second favorite report, which is Joe Grochmal is going to come up and talk about some AI opportunities for the city, and he has a presentation also.
Well, silver is still a metal, and so is bronze. So awesome. Well, in any case, it's very nice to see all of you. You know, I hope you had a great Thanksgiving break. I'm very excited to be running through a brief presentation this evening, taking a closer look at AI and generative AI tools and ways through which we might be able to get some additional benefit out of these in a very cost-effective manner. So on the on the board here, you'll see a presentation I put together. Next slide, please. So as we get started here, the first thing is defining, well, what is AI and how are we defining generative AI? So in this case, artificial intelligence is a simulation of human intelligence and machines that are programmed to think, learn, and make decisions. In other words, these are systems that are programmed to basically solve problems, identify patterns, conduct language understanding in a manner that's both efficient and accurate. Generative AI, on the other hand, tries to use information to then create certain outputs. So for example, text, images, audios, audio elements like that from existing data. So moving to the next slide, please. So I'm going to commit the ultimate cardinal sin here, and I'm going to transition over into an economics formula, which is something that you would think that I would have learned to work through at this point after grad school, but here we find ourselves. So what you see in front of you here is called the Cobb Douglas formula. And essentially, what this is saying is it's trying to determine what an ideal amount of output is based on certain variables. So we have Y, A, K, alpha, and N. So in this case, next slide, please. We're going to be focusing on A efficiency. So in other words, output equals efficiency times capital input raised to the elasticity of production times labor input. So if we move to the next slide, please. So when we think about what is efficiency in the case of a workforce? Well, I put together a pretty simple example here to get us off the off the formula. So let's say that the problem that I'm trying to deal with at a particular time is I'm trying to drive a screw into a board. There are a few different methods that I can use to try and do this. One way is I can just use my hand and try to put a screw in a board. That seems like a pretty bad idea, right? It's not going to be great. Next up, we could use a screwdriver, which would be slightly more efficient, would allow for that to to happen. But the best option here, again, assuming we have power and the right equipment, is a drill, right? It's going to be quick, easy, straight to the point. I can put in screws all day. I can put in fifty of them in the time it would take for me to use my hand to do one. Next slide, please. So transitioning over, again, when we think about efficiency now to an example that I encountered actually in this in this past week. So I had a PDF in front of me. I needed to go through it, extract and reformat several Excel spreadsheets from the PDF. I tried to copy and paste it. It wasn't working. It was coming out ugly. This would have taken at least an hour, so I could I could choose to do this by hand, type it out, go from there. Or alternatively, I can just copy it, plug it into chat, into ChatGPT, have it formulate the task for me in one minute, and then spend five minutes checking the results. Total cost on this, zero dollars to use the service. Next slide, please. And so sort of at a glance here, right, we're thinking about, you know, time, obviously spending six minutes on a project versus sixty. The money, of course, you know, what my salary is and the amount of, you know, money that the taxpayer would save for that task. But in reality, there's more at play here. Next slide, please. So I'm going to take us over now to neurobiology. So we're going to talk about glutamate. And as you're reading this and as you work through this text, your brain is processing information. You're absorbing, you know, electrical signals in the light detecting cells of your retina. This is creating an electrical signal that's traveling along axons, releasing chemical neurotransmitters into the synapse before it's finally processed by the correct neurons. Oversimplified, you're you're processing information, right? Didn't require a lot to do that. So when you were doing that, one of the things that you created was a thing called glutamate, which is a neurotransmitter allows for these electrical signals to to transmit. And over the course of a day, the average human is believed to make between thirty-three thousand and thirty-five thousand decisions. As you make these decisions, glutamate builds up. And over time, this makes it harder to make effective decision making. There's a twenty twenty-two study from the National Institute of Health that I encourage you all to check out, which basically examined how glutamate buildup over the course of a day plays out in what's considered to be high demand tasking. So in other words, jobs that require significant critical thought versus just sort of lower demand tasking where it's more repetitive. The upshot of it is that the more decisions, generally speaking, that people have to make, the more difficult it becomes for them to make effective decisions over time. So naturally, right at the end of a long day, you take a rest, your your mind is able to reset. But in reality, when we look at this, we're thinking is, how do we reduce the number of decisions that we have to make on topics that aren't significant, right? How do we save that energy for critical moments, points where we really need to be thinking about what we're doing and what we're trying to to achieve? So a higher stakes thing, for example. Next slide, please. So bringing that into the equation here, right, we break down the Excel exercise, you know, I could have spent sixty minutes by hand. The cost to the taxpayer would have been, you know, my hourly wage times one in this case. My output capacity would have been impacted because I would have spent sixty minutes on a task that, like, let's not kid ourselves here, is pretty trivial and pretty pointless to spend that much time on if it can be helped. And therefore, the outcome is suboptimal. Somewhere later on in the day, I'm going to be a little bit more fatigued. I'm not going to be thinking quite as clearly about the problem. On the other hand, with AI tools, it took six minutes to achieve this. My hourly weight of the cost to the taxpayers is whatever my hourly wage is times point one, right? So you save ninety percent essentially on that task. My output capacity is minimally impacted because it didn't require a lot of thought to do something that was pretty trivial and straight to the point. And I would argue that that's the preferred outcome in this case. Next slide, please. So over the past few weeks, I've been taking a closer look at dozens of tools that use AI or generative AI. And I'm trying to find options that make sense financially and that could serve to augment staff. In other words, it allows for for staff members in all departments to be able to focus on the tasks that really matter, applying for big grants, coming up with strategic initiatives, advancing efforts, engaging with the public. And so four programs that we've identified that might be useful, we're still digging into this. Number one is ChatGPT. I've mentioned that. There's a free subscription for it that allows for you to handle up to forty input processes per hour, which is a pretty decent clip. This is a service that generates human-like text responses based on user input. So again, it can be used to, you can calibrate responses, you can calibrate outputs through ChatGPT. It makes it easier just to handle basic run-of-the-mill getting text points together, et cetera. Next up is Grammarly. This is an AI-powered service that allows for for sort of tonal changes within text that you're writing. It also serves as a as an effective editor. So it looks at, you know, if there's spelling grammar errors, certain speaking styles, ways that people choose to approach text, it can be calibrated for that. Two of the higher profile tools that we found that were interesting include Tableau, which is a very powerful data visualization tool that I've used in the past. Basically, Tableau allows for you to quickly comb through large amounts of information, distill them into really tangible insights, and then present them in a clear way that doesn't make people glaze over like an economics formula. So that's an excellent tool as well. And then finally, we also identified one called My Sidewalk, which is a data aggregator. Basically, what their service does, this was through MIT's Data Lab, they go out and they identify hundreds of sources of verified data. So from reputable sources like the US Census, US federal government data, then they distill it all into one package that you can access through a subscription. You are then able to go through and identify key data points for either reports that you're looking for. If you're looking for a particular grant, you can literally feed the information from the grant through there, and it helps to identify data points that are directly relevant. It takes a process that might previously take, you know, hours to achieve and just cuts it down to a matter of seconds. I actually saw a demo on this before Thanksgiving, which was quite fascinating. Like Tableau, it also allows for visualization of the data, and the sets are routinely updated. So you don't have to worry about staff going out continuously updating data sets. It's just done, straight to the point. Next slide, please. And so why adoption might make sense now? So according to Oracle, only two percent of local governments in the United States are actively using AI technology at the moment. This is compared to about twenty percent in the private sector. The private sector is adopting it much faster than the public side. But again, as I mentioned previously, for many of these services, the cost is not very high to get a major response or a major benefit, excuse me. A study from MIT Sloan last year also identified that for staff who use generative AI, they're able to, on average, put out forty percent more work output than those who don't use it. And again, this isn't, you know, assuming that there's a major investment here, you know, it's literally ChatGPT and what you're able to do with it. So within this, why adoption might make sense now for Waterville? This would increase staff efficiency. It would automate repetitive tasks and allow for staff to really focus on major challenges and major efforts that would bring in the most benefit. It allows for the city to maximize resources. Again, as you saw in the example that I gave earlier, for every dollar that you spend on a task, you're going to get more benefit out of that, you're going to get more bang for your buck. There's, of course, meeting rising public expectations. Again, as the as the private sector and as other actors adopt AI, there's going to be an increased expectation for quick, on-the-point, direct service, and this will help us to keep pace. Around this as well, there's offering key insights. Again, the fact that you can use AI to comb through massive data sets to uncover trends that you weren't able to identify previously or that would be difficult to identify previously, that's a major advantage as well. And then finally, it also provides us with a capabilities advantage. Again, if only two percent of local governments, and this includes large cities across the US, have adopted this, this might allow for us to to position ourselves ahead of our peers, ensuring that we're equipped with the tools that allow for us to then outcompete these other areas for grants and competitive opportunities. Next slide, please. But of course, with great power also comes great responsibility. Next slide, please. And so again, as some of you, I'm sure, have seen that, you know, in both the public and private sector, there have been cases of improper usage, actually tying back to to my last posting in Alaska. There was a controversy last month where a member of the State Department of Education got in trouble for presenting a report that it turns out they generated using GPT, which then generated false citations. So you couldn't, so it was completely moot, obviously plagiarized in that sense. And what this underscores is that you need certain rules and regulations to ensure that, you know, AI technology is being used properly and responsibly, especially in a public setting. Next slide, please. And so within this, we've also done our research and identified a few organizations and municipalities that have already been thinking about this. The city of Boston has an excellent comprehensive policy for generative AI. The document on the left there, you can access it online. It's about eleven pages. They dig into, you know, how staff can appropriately use this, sort of the no, sort of the do's and do nots of using generative AI. And then on the right, there's another document which is very informative, actually goes beyond this, from the University of Michigan, that looks at artificial intelligence in local government, and it's a fascinating read, so I encourage you to check that out. Next slide, please. And so in conclusion, AI tools provide us with a unique opportunity to enhance our capabilities and service delivery. They also offer us a competitive edge over our peers. Again, many of these grants, it's a zero-sum game. You either have the money at the end of the day or you don't. And I can't speak for for everyone here, I would much rather have that money than not. But at the same time, we also have to recognize that responsible use has to be prioritized. And if we're going to be implementing anything new, we need to have safeguards in place to ensure that it's being used responsibly, properly, and within the bounds of common sense and decency. And so looking ahead at the next few weeks, our plan is to continue to explore these options, to identify what we see as the most valuable options on the table, and then for us to go back and see, you know, what we could potentially implement and what would make sense and be worthwhile. So stay tuned, there's more to come on that front. And next slide, please. And I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. That was great. No question? I disagree. That was great. Yeah.
Wow. As a biochemist that teaches classes about AI, having a presentation that included glutamate, AI, municipal government, yeah, the Cobb Douglas equation, some of my best friends are economists. I'm very impressed by that. My question is, how would you recommend specifically the implementation? Like, where in the municipal workflow are you looking? What departments do you think would particularly benefit from this kind of thing? And then how, in like more concrete terms, would you envision this being implemented?
Yeah, absolutely. So I envision there being two stages to this. The first stage is putting together a pretty standard kit. So, you know, again, something that all staff could use. I think Grammarly and ChatGPT are an excellent tool with that, just because, you know, the the opportunities that those offer are pretty universal. Again, people are interacting with the public, we're sending out communications, we need to make sure that those are tight, those are up to snuff. So I think putting together, you know, a standard package of basic AI tools for all staff, and then on the backend, thinking about elements like Tableau or other services such as that, which allow for a deeper, sort of more data-driven analysis. One of the goals here, and again, I kept this out just to spare some time because I didn't want to go for too long, is thinking about this concept of what's called data democratization. And data democratization basically means that you try to find tools or systems that allow for all staff and, you know, members of the public to access and see the same information. All too often, in public and private agencies, data ends up being siloed. So you end up with someone who, you know, is the chief information officer, and they have a small staff, and they have all the data, and it's a black box. No one really knows what's going on. One of my goals through this, and it's something that My Sidewalk would be helpful with, is creating and putting the data together in a way that all staff can access it. So to answer your question, I see there being two components here. The first one's a general kit for all staff that focuses mainly on grammatical tools and looking at elements like that. The second one is a more robust system that allows for staff to then access data from a centralized location, but having that kind of access. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I agree. Fascinating presentation and surprising data that municipal governments are not using these tools as much as, as, I mean, I guess it's not surprising, but I'm surprised that they're utilized at such a low degree. I think this is essential for anyone in in the workplace these days. Obviously, I guess what comes to my mind is there's there's clearly going to be a professional development element here because using these tools are so complex. I mean, ChatGPT, I think we're all familiar with and Grammarly, but when you get into some of the other ones, you know, they're, they can be, that's, I think, where you get into a lot of issues with the citations and really verifying the data and everything. So I guess I'm, you know, I I'm very glad that the city is investing in this for the But I would also, I guess, I guess my question is, is there going to be, aside from providing a kit, will there be some professional development so that everyone knows, is able to use these tools and that and that they're not using them just for the sake of it either, right? I like, you know, it's a lot of fun, but.
Of course. How do we get that real value out of it? So first off, I just want to underscore, we're just in an exploratory stage at this point, so we haven't made any decisions or we're not driving the ball forward on that front. With that having been said, should the decision be made to move ahead with this? Yeah, training would be essential. And again, a big part, you know, on one hand, it's ensuring responsible usage, but then there's also beyond that, just effective usage, knowing how to properly utilize the tool and get the most out of it. On the side about citations, we've actually identified another tool that I was on the fence about putting this in called Zetaro, which I've used extensively. Basically, Zetaro is this interesting plugin where you set it up on your Chrome, and then if you're going through a data set or a source, you literally click a button in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, and it automatically cites all of that information and makes it easy to then bring over into a report so people can see where you got your information from, and they can confirm its credibility. So to the point about citations, that's something that we are thinking about. To the point about training, obviously, that would depend on the tool, but it is something that we would, you know, we definitely would be interested in exploring.
So I'm just curious why, and maybe you have looked at an Office 365 package? Because everything is fully integrated with Office 365, and they don't have as many, I guess, privacy concerns as some of these separate companies do.
Yeah, so I've taken a closer look at Power BI in particular. Full disclosure, Ian, I I haven't taken as close a look at those, so that is something that we can do. With that having been said, you know, when I looked at Power BI, it appeared that Tableau had significantly more functionality and seemed more user-friendly for staff.
Well, I just, Power BI has a function where you can connect it directly to Excel, and it'll clean up your Excel for you if you copy and paste in kind of word one. It just, it integrates the, you know, these features, like, you know, there's Microsoft Editor, which is Grammarly, there's Power BI, which is Tableau, there's Copilot, which is ChatGPT. They integrate one hundred percent with the whole suite of Office 365 products. So you're not dealing with, we've got, you know, these three, four separate contracts for these different software platforms. I mean, some of which, I mean, I know Grammarly has huge privacy concerns, they've had data breaches, stuff like that. Not saying that, like, Microsoft hasn't, but they've got a much better, much better track record, and it's much more, much more integrated. So I'm just curious kind of why, why we're not looking at at that.
I'd be happy to take a closer look at that and report out.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Joe, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone.
I appreciate it. Great work. Okay, move, you're included, correct? Thank you, sir. Just wanted to make sure. All right, council comments or committee updates? Any councils have any committee updates or comments that they'd like to make at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to, oh, you do. Oh, okay. Sorry.
You can't get away from me like that.
I tried. Sorry, guys.
All right, so I would like to report on the Resiliency Committee that met November twenty-first. It was myself, Michael Hall, and Linda Woods was taking the minutes. So first, the Community Action Grant update. I know there's been some people in the community that have asked about that. The, we are submitting a grant for, a request for seventy-five thousand dollars to the Community Action Grant, and we're looking for rooftop solar. We have gone through a pretty extensive process of assessing municipal buildings throughout the city to identify ones that are the most amenable to rooftop solar, and we identified LaFleur Airport as the buildings out there as being prime targets for a number of reasons, which I won't detail. But so we're asking for infrastructure for rooftop solar there and also insulation upgrades to a number of those buildings, which should significantly improve their energy efficiency and lower heating costs for the city. So that grant is due, I forget the exact date, it's like the tenth or something like that. But Joe, no, not Joe, Michael is in the, Michael Hall is in the. But Joe, no, not Joe. Michael is in the, Michael Hall is in the final stages of drafting that and collecting. He's gotten all the data he needed from Randy, and we're going to get that hopefully out the door by Friday. So, I'm excited about that. Hopefully soon, we'll be able, the committee will be able to waive another grant that we've secured for the city. Yeah, then we talked about the efficiency main charging stations, the RFP that we have for that. There was a, there was some conversation about installation costs, and he's looking into the Level 2 chargers at Head of Falls. And Michael's checking in on the Build America, Buy America requirements, the BABA requirements. Unfortunately, this will increase the cost significantly, but that is, that is what the BABA does. Anyways... The data, a thorough walk, and so, an update on LED lights. They had done a thorough walk through a city hall and the police station, checking on LED lights. Brian wants more attractive fixtures because he's laser-focused on making sure that the city is presenting the best... Yeah, presenting the best face, but also being sustainable. And also install, making sure we have dimmer switches, so thank you to the city manager for his constant vigilance there. He has Sarah Cross tasked with focusing on this. And then, I had put together a fairly thorough list of action items, targets for different... I'm not going to go through the entire thing. It was pages long that I regaled them with that night. But of different opportunities in the city for improving our resiliency and sustainability that was segregated across short, medium, and long-term goals. And I had identified funding sources for all of them, so we have our marching orders. Or the committee has lots of work to do, and I'm hoping to keep Michael busy writing grants for the foreseeable future. And I also welcome Joe to add his significant talents to that effort as well at any point here. So, we chose a bunch of grants from this long list of the short-term goals that I had put together, and you'll be hearing more about those as that stuff develops. I think that's important. I wasn't able to make it to the other one. Quarry Road this month, but you'll hear from that.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other counselors' comments, commitment? Okay. All right. Next, I'm going to turn it over to a couple of members of our youth council. I'm going to give an update as to what they're doing, so if you both could introduce yourself, that would be fantastic.
I'm Martin Hazelhurst. I'm a senior at Waterville Senior High School. Yeah, I live in Ward 4.
My name is Thosia Reddy. I'm a freshman at Waterville Senior High School, and I live in Ward 6.
We have recently been discussing, at our latest meeting on November 18th, two main things. First, a job-oriented project related to more of a job fair for youth in Waterville, as well as a civic engagement project for the city by the youth council. We established two subcommittees at our most recent meeting for each of those main two focuses. Yeah, we've been, it's, yeah, that's mainly it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right. All right, moving on to public comment. Let's see, we've got a couple here. First up, Dan. Dan Anderson.
Hi, I'm Dan Anderson from Ward 5. I didn't see it on the agenda tonight, so I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up. But last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about collecting pass-through balances from the ambulance. And I just think, why are we doing this? Why do we have to? I'm going to complain a little bit. I mean, we had a service here by a private company for years that was meeting most of our needs, and then the city decides to buy some ambulances, to go into ambulance business. If it's making money, that's one thing, but if it isn't, now we have a service that the citizens have to pay for that we didn't have to pay for if we didn't use it. So, I'm not, I don't have a solution really, except that it'd be nice to turn it back to where it was or just keep in mind not to do this again. But I also have a friend who's on a select committee in a small town, not too far from here, and he's telling how devastating it's been to have Delta in its diminished, lesser capacity to serve them. So, it had an effect, not on, just on the citizens of Waterville, but on the area as well. So, I guess that's all I had to say. Except I've never heard if they made money, if the ambulance is making money, the ambulance is. From what I saw of this, the audit or the city report, it looked like it was a negative, and that negative was what the deficit was in the budget of Waterville. That's the way I saw it. I'm not familiar with how, I mean, municipal sheet looks, but I have looked at businesses' profit and loss statements before, so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. Patty, anyone online? Okay. All right. Next up this evening, Karen. Karen Hack.
Hi, Karen Hack from Ward 6. And first, I want to say yay to the civic engagement part. It's really exciting to hear, and I love going to the polls and seeing all the young people who are there working because Jessica Graham has you come and do that. It's just really exciting to see. So, thanks for putting that on your agenda. Okay, I also want to give a huge shout-out to one person and one organization who are really doing their best to get food to people who need it. The person is Steve Knight, who you might have read about in the paper over Thanksgiving. Steve started gleaning food and medicine 10 years ago, and he and now six volunteers bring thousands of pounds of food from local farms, the farmer's market, and hospitals to local share tables, libraries, the Muske Center, and other nonprofits for anyone to take and use. And as much as I, and we don't want to believe it, hunger is a huge issue in the city and in Maine, and Steve and the Central Maine Gleaners have been doing something about it largely under the radar, and I want to thank them. The other shout-out is to the Hannaford at JFK. Since the election, I've decided to get more involved in giving back locally, and I offered to work with Carla at the lighthouse. My first task was to pick up donated food, even though it was at 7:00 in the morning, which is not my preferred time to be up. Last Friday, Bruce and I met Carla at Hannaford so she could show us the routine. And it was good that we both brought trucks. There were more than 500 pounds of vegetables, dairy, meat, bakery items, and both trucks and the backseats of the vehicles were filled to the brim. And while this was an unusual amount, there's a truckload every week at the store. I don't doubt that there are many more people and businesses are contributing to helping people who need a hand, and it would be great to know about them. So, I'd challenge anybody to come, to shout that out once a week, because, or once a meeting, because it's just really good to know what is working in the city. I think there are a lot of things, and we don't always hear about them. But I am aware that there are already a number of efforts underway to address the issues of homelessness, mental health, and poverty, including in the police department, KV cap, kind of like behavioral health, and the homelessness task force that meets every month at City Hall. I just think we need to build on those efforts, and I would suggest that a facilitated process of a community conversation would be an effective way for engaging people in finding those solutions. And I think I mentioned that five or six months ago, and hoping that it's going to happen soon. But again, I want to thank Steve and Hannaford for your mostly unrecognized work that's going on in the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Second.
And we have one online. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor Burdo? Counselor Klepak?
Yeah.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Now, can I get a motion to read by title only, please?
So, moved. Read by title only? Second.
Thank you. And a roll call?
I don't think we need a roll call if she's not online.
Okay. Well, will you let me know if she pops back up? Thank you. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to Order 223, 2024.
Accept grant funds from the Northern Border Regional Commission for infrastructure improvements at Quarry Road Trails.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Comments, concerns? Seeing none. Can I get, you have, yes.
Yeah, I just want to, again, underline how long it has been getting to this point, how much work has gone into it, and how fantastic this is going to be for Quarry Road. So, I'm very excited to, like, take this final vote. That's it. Cheer. Ra-ra.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Seeing none. All right. Roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yeah.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Order 224, 2024.
Accept grant funds from the Bill and Joan Alphon family foundation for infrastructure improvements at Quarry Road Trails.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Repeat same sentiments?
Same sentiments. Thank you, Jennifer Kirstedt, for all of her work on this. Very impressive.
And also to the Bill and Joan Alphon foundation.
Of course, of course.
Awesome. All right. Patty, roll call, please.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to Order 225, 2024.
Approve the purchase and sale agreement.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Counselor Gagnon?
Yeah, this is just an example of something I was talking about last time, about how if you look at the two items above this one, it's right within the agenda. It's fairly explanatory what's going on here, but the approve the purchase and sale agreement. You know, I had a few people comment, make a comment that there really isn't enough on the agenda that, you know, I have no idea what this is talking about, you know. I mean, I know what it's about. Most people wouldn't understand. So, that's what I was talking about before, and in fact, the next one is the same thing. And then the personnel, I know that has to do with Closing Fridays, but I'm not sure if the public would see that.
Just a comment. There's a memo attached to that.
I understand that, sir. I understand that, and that's what we said last time. But a lot of people just want to look at the agenda, find out what's going on. A simple request, a little more information on the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, any discussion with regard to this item? Seeing none. Can I get a roll call?
We might as well, after that, I mean, we might as well clarify what this is. It's swapping two properties to allow for more parking for the fire department and likewise at a, near my apartment building. Yes?
Yep.
Okay.
We talked about it in detail last time.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to Ordinance 227, 2024.
Amend the Personnel Ordinance, Chapter 56.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. How do we want to, so, any customer, any, any counsel comments or discussion you want to kick us off tonight? Counselor Finch?
Sure. I'll kick us off.
Thank you.
I think since this got posted online, you know, both, both by the press and in Facebook groups, I was kind of surprised at how much interaction there has been around this. And even from a couple constituents talking to me, one of the, I think, biggest themes is that essentially going from 4:30 to 5:30 is six of one, half a dozen of the other in terms of what people's schedules are like after they leave work, particularly with challenges around picking their children up from daycare in time to make it to City Hall during extended evening hours. So, I, I'm going to propose an amendment to change the hours from 7:00 to 5:30 to 7:30 to 6:00, to give more time in the evenings.
Okay.
We have a second. Second.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Counselor Klepak?
Yeah. Can, can I ask representatives of the, of the city, maybe the city manager, can speak to this amendment?
Sure. Thank you. And this is on behalf of the HR department and myself. So, when this was being discussed with employees, HR, Bobby Joe in particular, did propose a few different possible schedules to get employee feedback. So, this schedule that went until 6:00 PM was proposed. The major feedback we heard from employees is interferes with childcare responsibilities in the evening. Many of our employees are parents, and so, the general feedback was daycares, et cetera. It's a challenge keeping people here until 6:00 PM. So, that was just some of the feedback from employees on this. The preferred schedule was the 7:00 to 5:30, mainly because of childcare responsibilities in the afternoon and evening.
And your concern with it is that 5:30 is not enough time for people to get to the city council after they are done with work to conduct their business?
The childcare was the most cited. There's not enough time for them to get off of work at 5:00, pick their kids up. There we go. Sorry. There's not enough time for them to get off of work at 5:00, pick their kid up from childcare, and get to City Hall before 5:30. Or they worried that they would be rushing it, but that, that was such a common theme, was if you make it 4:30 or if you make it 5:30, we can't get there either way. I suppose another option, I don't know if it was talked about, to do 7:00 to 6:00 with staggered hours among the staff?
I don't think in particular, but again, I think it was just at 6:00 PM with a lot of folks, just with the picking up kids. Bobby Joe, anything, anything different to add there, or is that... Sorry.
Bobby Joe, why don't you come down?
Come on down.
We were talking about this for a little bit. I went, "Come on down." You can sit too, if you want. It's fine. Just make sure the mic's on, because the chat will get mad.
One of the other issues is with staggering staff. We don't have multiple staff members in all these departments to be able to do that, so we wouldn't be able to staff that way.
Counselor Green?
So, there are a couple things I'm hearing here. I mean, one is balancing... there are a couple things I'm hearing here. I mean, one is balancing the needs of employees with the needs of residents getting, you know, and we have parents on both, in both of those groups. I understand that the extended hours are meant to provide a greater service that, to the public, longer hours that would compensate for fewer days. But I'm wondering if, I'm wondering how important that really is in, in, in this situation. You know, do people, are people not able to get to City Hall in the hours that we have now? So where I'm going with this is, like, let's make sure that we're, that the changes we make are actually going to result in better service and better work conditions. The other thing that I just, I keep coming back to is a lot of departments aren't public-facing, right? It's, it's mostly finance and clerk's office. So it, it seems to me that, you know, the other, I don't know, the hours could be very flexible, for instance, for a department like, yeah, exactly, assessing, or even the city manager's office. So I think, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to just, like, pick a number because it fits with the number of hours that you have to get everyone to work in order to get their forty hours a week. And particularly given, you know, the glutamate point, I mean, working ten hours seems like a long time if you're making decisions all day. And it could be actually, you know, not as productive to work for ten-hour days. So those are my thoughts. I'm, you know, I, I would like, I respect that this is a trend in municipal government, but I also just want to make sure that we're very intentional about the change we're making, and that it's good for the employees and good for the city.
You know, I, I'm a proponent for the four, four-day-a-week work week. I think that's dynamite. My question is, and I understand not everyone has access, you know, to the internet, but what are the services, Counsel Finch, if, if someone is talking to you in regards to, you know, you know, needing to do city business, what are they trying to do? Because, you know, on the Waterville website, I mean, there's A T V snowmobile registration renewals, boat registration, dog license, hunting, fishing, motor vehicle registration, property tax payments, and vital record requests. Right online. So if someone needs to do city business, I mean, the online, there's an online option as well, if time is of the essence. I, I think that, you know, a work-life balance is important. However, I also understand that city services need to be made available to those that need to have it, need to, you know, access it. And I believe that, you know, there, you know, there's an option, and the option is an online option as well.
Patty, I'm sorry, I know you're writing, but can you just offer some, just to Counsel Gilly's point, some of the things that people do come in for that maybe aren't on the website? I think, right off the top of my head, I'm just thinking of, like, new car registration is probably one that's, that would be important. License plates and things like that, obviously.
So for the finance side, I would say the one transaction that wouldn't be available online is a, is a new car registration. My understanding is there's a thirty-day plate that's available when you buy a car. It used to be seven days and fourteen days. It's been a long time since I bought a new car. But it's thirty days now, so they have a thirty-day window. The other services for re-registrations and A T Vs and snowmobiles, that, that is available online. Services on the clerk's side that wouldn't be available, I would say maybe most are available. Vital records, voter registration, absentee requests are all available online now. Dog licensing. Subcommittee applications are processed online. So the only thing I can think of is a, a business license, like a new business license, if someone was coming in to want to start a new business, you know. We don't have that, a business license program where we can do online access for that. But, you know, we do take inquiries over the phone generally first anyway with a new business, and kind of let them know the process. The applications can be emailed to them. We also have the applications online that they would have to mail in with payment or email. So a new business probably is the only thing. We do send renewals to businesses that are up for a renewal, so that's generally done through the mail or in person. But those generally aren't super time-sensitive where they have to have it today. You know. And even a new business, when they apply, they can submit the application and payment, but it has to come to the city council, code has to sign off, fire, finance. So it's not an immediate, even if they came in today and applied, they wouldn't be issued the license today.
Yeah, I mean, I think also, I mean, I think, you know, other things, obviously, the online option is great, and I think that's where, you know, we're moving to as a society. But I mean, there's still a lot of folks that maybe don't have access to the internet, you know, that, again, would require to come in and things like. I'm just trying to think of, you know, all that. And the other thing is, like, obviously, I could do it online. I get a printout. But I mean, I might have a computer, but maybe I don't have a printer to print out the document that I need to put in my car until my actual registration comes. So I mean, I'm just trying to understand some barriers, but yeah. Okay. Thank you, Patty. Counsel Klepak?
Yeah. I mean, we're not going to be engraving this in stone. We can try it and see how it goes and reassess it in July, right? And if the, there's like a public outcry and a radical drop, drop in access to city services, then we can say, well, we, we tried it, and it fails on the merits, or it has been a success and succeeds on the merits. I, I don't think that, I mean, it's important to make, try to make the best choice, but also go into it with, you know, a sense of humility, that we're, we're just trying to find what works and to keep the city staffed with a modern workforce that is not in a bubble, that, that is operating within the context of a, of a, of a larger workforce, which is quite competitive. We've heard factual reports on the, the difficulty of getting highly-trained municipal employees, right? That's real. That's real. So, and because all of this is specifically targeted towards recruiting and retention of the best employees and with the ones that we have in terms of retention, you know, really making sure that they're happy here and they don't get snatched by Winslow, or Oakland, or Fairfield, or any of these other communities that try to, like, you know, we, we have an amazing team. I don't want to lose our amazing team to envious neighbors, as much as I want to see them succeed as well. I, I really like the team we have. So with that in mind, although I, I'm not, like, adamant one way or the other, I, I would personally tend to err on the side of what the staff has, I think it was ninety-eight percent was the number that was reported to us by H R here. I, I would tend to err on the side of their preference, which is seven to five-thirty. If it is, you know, that is going to impede us from passing this, and it needs to be seven-thirty to six, then, okay. That's, that's that. But from my perspective, if we're actually going to give this a try, then I am willing to, I'm very amenable to taking the recommendations of the people that this, that this is going to be directly impacting in terms of their, their work. That, that's, that's my perspective on it. If in July, sometime this summer, after budget season, I think we should revisit it after budget season. And we can, that, that could be, I'm not suggesting it as an amendment, but if that is something that helps people get to yes, or at least maybe with this, I know Counsel Gagnon had, had his concerns that he voiced last time. Then I would be open to revisiting it at, at the future and to see if it actually worked or not. Assess it again at that time. Those are my thoughts. I, I personally am, am quite in favor of this, because I, I do see this as part of a, a modern workforce that much of the public is going to be experiencing themselves, right?
Yeah, I, I do like the idea, I, I do understand the idea of a trial period, or if you wanted to do that. If you wanted to take a look at it, I would, if that was something that the council wanted to do, I would suggest writing that into this, so that's not a surprise. But what, what would be the benchmarks that you want to look at, to say, hey, let's, let's review this again in six months versus just coming out of the blue and saying, hey, it's been six months, we're going to pull it back. Everybody knows going into it that, hey, you know what, we're going to try this for six months, collect some data and go from there. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, any recommendations?
I'm ready for amendment two, after we figure this one.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we can, we can vote on it.
So we, so right now, what we have on the table is that there was, there was an amendment that was made for, to move the hours from eight to six.
No.
Sorry, sorry, seven to six. Sorry, yeah, sorry. Seven-thirty to six.
Yeah, it was from
Thank you.
Seven to five-thirty, moving it to seven-thirty to, to six, is what the amendment is.
Okay. Counsel Gagnon?
I had heard that adjustments have already been made. I mean, this is a very, this program and this, this idea and the hours and everything have all, seems to be carefully crafted around individuals that are currently in City Hall. But I also heard that there were some individuals that can't make this work in their schedule. And that the city is actually transferring her to a different department. Is that correct? That's not correct? Wow. I heard it from the horse's mouth.
Is, is this supported throughout the entire? I mean, I, I understand you guys had, had, have had conversations with city employees. Would you say that if all of them, some of them are in favor for, for, for this, for this idea?
You're talking about these particular hours or the four-day schedule?
The four-day schedule in general.
As we said, it's ninety-nine percent in favor. There was, you know, we're not naming names. There's one employee in particular that did have some concerns on childcare. Bobby Joe, I believe, has had further conversations with her, and is, she's sort of indicated that it's, it's workable. So I think we're nearly at a hundred percent, you know, but I, I think, you know, we'll say ninety-nine. Are we comfortable with that percent, you know, in favor of this?
Counsel McCormick?
We've got Matt here, and I would like to hear from him. Down the road, are your crews going to want this too, down the road? When they see everybody else is already getting Fridays off? And they're still chasing trashcans on Friday?
I would, I would expect they would. We haven't gotten nearly that far yet. We want to see, you know, what all happens tonight and kind of go from there. So we're not, we're not prepared for our work crews to go to a four-day week. There's a lot of, a lot of moving parts. Not to say that we couldn't get there.
No, no. Well, the other side of it is, I'm looking at, they've already heard about City Hall, so is that going to, is the rumblings already started within the crews?
I haven't heard. I haven't heard.
Well, we've talked about four-day trash week forever, you know, trying to make that, the logistics of that work and, you know, going to Norwich Walk, and where are we going before, and just the timing just didn't work, so. So I think those conversations have been going on for quite some time, so, yeah. Counsel Green?
Well, yeah, thank you. I was just going to observe that the hours, seven-thirty to six, which I think was proposed as an amendment, would make it very hard on our city clerk to get to the council meeting at six o'clock on, on Tuesday, so.
I don't have to come. It's all right.
You know, so just thinking about
I'm only thinking of you. It's okay.
Just thinking about, you know, six o'clock does seem late for any, for, for, for Maine or Waterville to, to have people working, and so I, I guess I'm in favor of keeping it at seven to five-thirty.
Okay. All right. Well, let's take a vote on the amendment that's on the table. And so the amendment is to amend from seven to five-thirty to seven-thirty to six. All those, I'm sorry.
Counselor, yes, DeBrito is online now, so we'll do a roll call. Thank you.
Do you see us on the stage?
Oh, I don't know.
No.
Counsel DeBrito, did you have a comment, or are you ready to vote?
No, I was ready to vote.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All set, Mayor?
Yes.
Counsel Gilly?
No.
Counsel DeBrito?
No.
Counsel Klepak?
Nope.
Counsel Green?
No.
Counsel Gagnon?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yeah.
Counsel McCormick?
No.
So the vote is two in favor, five opposed. That fails passage.
Okay. All right. So we're back to the original, the original reading. Counsel Finch?
Right. So the second amendment would be to run this as an eight-month trial period with more detailed data collection during that eight-month trial period, reporting out by time of day, number per day, and also including a survey of employees. Yeah. So there we go. Just making it a trial period, so we can assess what is working, what is not working.
Do
An amendment to my amendment.
A survey, also.
Okay, sure. And, and, and customers. Yes.
So say, I'll second them, I'll second your, your amendment. However, I do have a question about it. When would this, a eight-month start, would it start, I mean, would it start today, or would it start the implementation, which you guys?
Implementation, so it'd start, it'd go one-one-twenty, twenty-five through
Okay.
whatever that month is. One-eighty, twenty, twenty-five. Yeah, I can count. That's all I got to do. Right.
Through when, Counsel Finch? August, the end of August?
End of August, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you may.
So to this proposed amendment here, how feasible is, is that? What, how onerous or feasible is this kind of? So I know some of this data collection, you've already presented this kind of data, but there's, there's other things here. What's the feasibility of that?
I think the one concern, I'll let Bobby Joe speak to this, is regarding our collective bargaining agreements and negotiations coming up this year. Bobby, you have any thoughts on that in particular?
Thirteen of the individuals that we are discussing in this group, their contract is up at the end of June.
Oh.
So this is part of that, will be part of that discussion once we start negotiating that contract. So that's just a piece of it that we need to consider.
So would a five-month trial period be okay? I know the concern with a six-month trial period is not wanting to have, if there are changes, and have a larger discussion, to really focus on budget season. So I'm fine with only making it a five-month trial period, if that would make it easier and not affect the bargaining.
Their contract expires June thirtieth, correct?
When, when is the correct time to reassess this in, from your vantage point?
It's, because with negotiations coming up, it's kind of right, right in the middle. So, I mean, I mean, do you have an answer that's helpful? I mean, you know, it.
Just because I don't know. I don't, because we haven't started negotiating with them, so obviously, most of you have been in negotiations, and they can be very short, or they can
Yeah.
go beyond that contract. So it's a little hard to say that we're going to start and end at this time with them.
So when, when do the negotiations for the contracts start?
Well, we're hoping to start in February or March. The latest. We usually start late January, early February. We have three contracts open, so we're trying to stagger a little bit, so.
You know, this is consistent with what other communities have done, right? Lewiston had a trial period. South Portland didn't have a trial period, but they had a report, and, and the council re, took another vote, that they wanted to continue. So I think some kind of, you know, assessment is, is valid in, in this kind of a change. I think, you know, obviously, that timing is is awkward, but I, but I also think that, you know, if this works, it's great. It's not like we're, we want it to fail. We just want to make sure that it's sure that it's, it's, it's working. So, I'm in, I would be in favor of a five-month assessment deadline.
Yeah, my, my only concern, and I think I was the one that, that Counselor Finch was speaking to, I just wanted it to be out of budget season, because we had so much on our plate then.
Yeah.
My preference would be to have it, whatever, the first meeting in July or something after all that is in our rearview mirror. But if you want to do it, if five months is, is fine and it's not going to, I mean, that feels like smack dab in the middle of us in the final stages of budget season. I, my recommendation would be either sooner or later.
So, I think the key thing for assessment is, you know, maybe not eight months. I'd be inclined to say three months would even be okay, because the key here is to get through, to have data, three months of data, well, I guess that's only ninety days. So, four months would be better, but also that gives us a bulk of the Monday holidays that occur throughout the year. We'll have, what, four of them that we'll be able to assess at that point? So, I mean, assessing in May, ending in April, assessing in May might be, might be a way, a way to go. That gets us enough data and doesn't conflict with budget season and the bargaining negotiations.
I would just add, you know, if we are gonna do an assessment period, I think perhaps making it too short, you know, is not helpful. I mean, in my mind, I feel like at least six months is, is a useful, you know, you know, amount of time to look at. I think three months is really, because, I mean, let's be honest, there is going to also be some transition period to this too. And I think allowing, you know, at least six months or something in that range to look at is probably helpful to get a better flavor, at least through a couple of seasons and everything too, of how this is working.
I think it also allows for more citizen feedback, the number of citizens that are gonna come into City Hall that may or may not have a positive experience that they want to share. I think that would be also good, you know, good feedback to have, so.
I got nothing.
Okay, so, it sounds like, yeah, it sounds, we need, we need to decide on the four, five, six-month period and it's...
Right now, there's an amendment for the eight-month.
Okay.
So, let's vote on that and then we'll...
Should we go, I mean, is that...
All right, so we're gonna, at this point, we're rolling with eight.
Counselor DeBrito has her hand raised.
Counselor DeBrito?
Question. So, the eight-month, what, up to where would it bring us? What time of the month? Sorry.
August.
The end of August, August thirty-first?
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
Okay. All right, roll call on the amendment, please.
Counselor Gilli?
No.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
The vote is five in favor and two opposed, so it has passage. So, can we move it as amended?
So moved.
So...
And roll call for the...
I don't know if there's any more amendments.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yeah, I just want another, we're back to the main motion, right?
Yes. Correct, yes.
I guess I just have to express, you know, some dissatisfaction with considerations. We're spending a lot of time at this table considering the needs of, you know, employees. And we haven't really spent much time talking about citizens and what this means. Businesses in Waterville, I did a quick survey. I didn't find one business in downtown Waterville. And I think I looked at sixty, maybe? Not one is closed on a Friday. Those are downtown business hours. You know, the businesses, the community has established that. You know, when I was a kid, growing up in Skowhegan, my father ran a jewelry store in town and he stayed open Friday nights until nine o'clock, because that's the day everybody got paid. Now, we're taking Friday away altogether in Waterville. I also don't think that we've really are focused on how we're making this decision. There's very little empirical evidence of everything that's been presented here. There was never a retention study. There was never a survey of employee, of constituents. And we really haven't really learned a whole lot about what the side effects have been on all these other communities. There's a lot of hearsay about that this is gonna be better, but here we are trying to figure out what exactly is the best half-hour or how many months it's going to be, to be best. And I think that this is, issue is already causing us problems and we haven't even passed it yet. There's a lot of discussion tonight about unions. I gotta believe that this is gonna be seen by other unions that represent city employees as, give me the city hall employees. And that if I were representing them, if I was their union rep, I'd make sure that I got mine, because, you know, when it comes to unions, it's all about fairness, right? I mean, everybody wants to, gotta be fair. And if city employees are gonna be getting something, well, then I want something else. It might not be Mondays off. It might be higher pay, more this or whatever. The other things I don't think we considered was really, other things that could ameliorate this, this retention problem. Working at home, that was briefly discussed and how that might work, if people needed to, you know, couldn't work Fridays or whatever. I don't think we did resolve the problem of Monday holidays, right? So, that means that for Monday holidays, we will be closed four days straight. There'll be a three-day week, that's it. I, I just think that I really enjoyed the A1 presentation, because to me, that's how proposals should be brought to the city council. You never said what you are going to do in the long run. You introduced the idea, and if we had problems with it, you would have heard about it there, right? So, now we're going to, or he's going to, you know, look at other things. This was all signed, sealed and delivered when we got it. Okay, the, all of the amendments, all of the language was changed. I don't know who put all that time in, but there's pages and pages of city ordinances that had to be changed, just to make this possible. So, I wouldn't call it blindsiding, but certainly not as much preparation in selling this to the council and to, to the public was given on this particular proposal. I hope we don't do business that way on everything. And also, I guess I don't buy this whole concept of kind of keeping up with the Joneses, you know, other towns that we have to match them because they're doing it, so it must be good. A lot of towns do a lot of things. We read about them in the paper sometimes and they're not always good. But I don't, you know, there's this, there's this impetus, seems like, that we need to somehow be in some type of a pecking order of other communities. I think we should do what's best for Waterville, and I think we should do what's best for the citizens of Waterville. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Yeah, I just want to remind Counselor Gagnon respectfully that, that this is based on not businesses in Waterville, but other municipalities. And I think that we have had, we have, we have had, we have had, I'm speaking, please, we've had evidence of what other communities are doing and what the staff wants, and, I mean, this is change, right? I'm in favor of, of going ahead and trying this, and with eight-month reassessment period, we can tweak anything that we need to and we can change course if it's not working.
I also, you know, just very, very quickly, two points to, you know, Counselor Gagnon's, you know, thoughts, is that, you know, I don't know the specific number, but I'm pretty sure that Waterville employees are also citizens as well, with families and with other, other obligations and things, that they will have more time for their work-life balance. And again, as, as far as blindsiding goes, I mean, I believe that within the next eight months, we will be able to collect whatever data and, you know, and whatever thoughts or concerns or anywhere in between from city employees and from the citizens of Waterville, whether or not this is, this is efficient. We all want efficient government. We all want people to be served. And I, I believe that, I believe that in eight, in eight months, it's going to be, you know, I hope it will be successful and people will be happy on both sides.
Counselor Finch?
So, question, have we resolved the floating holidays thing? Because the city manager sent us this email with these option one, option two, option three. Do we have to make an amendment on one of those options tonight?
So, as is, it would be, you know, as we're currently observing holidays. I mean, we did email out this, kind of some background on different options. If you're interested in one of these other options, I think would require an amendment here tonight to institute the floating holidays and which, which version. Otherwise, it is sort of standing as is.
Okay, but, so can you explain, sorry, I just, it took me, I'm confused. So, standing as is, right now, the policy says when a holiday falls on a Saturday, it's observed on the preceding Friday. So, then in your option two, you talk about any, that if it falls on a Friday or Saturday, would not require us to close on any other day. If we're closed on Fridays, would that be observed on Thursday? Or is it just a day? Like, how does that, how does that work with this four-day work week with what the policy language says?
I'll say, Bobby Jo wrote this, so I'll let her...
Thank you, I'm just...
Okay, so, looking at the amendment that we sent out, with the Friday, Saturday, you're looking at the new...
Can you just explain, if we don't do anything, what happens?
Yes.
That's the first version that was in the packet. I have it right here.
I don't have the first version. I just have the new version.
We have no floating holidays. It's this one.
We'll close Friday and, and Monday. Okay, so, if it was on a Friday, it would have been on a Thursday. That was the amendment we were gonna have to make in the last meeting. So, if there was a holiday on a Friday, it would have been observed on a Thursday. If it was on a Saturday, it would have been on a Thursday. If it was on a Sunday, it would have always been on a Monday, which is what we do now. The first option that was in that memo is to do Friday and Saturdays as floating holidays. So, if they land on a Friday or Saturday, City Hall does not close down on Thursday. We would, employees would just receive a day off at another time in lieu of that holiday. That does not cost the city any money to do that for those days that you fall in those.
Yes, okay.
Any other days that you choose to open up on a holiday and make floating holidays do cost overtime based on the Afsmi union contract. And those were the other two options that were listed.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor McCormick?
I guess my concern here now is, if the holiday's on a Friday and they're already off, why are we concerning ourselves with the holiday? They're already off.
Well...
No, 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 you gotta get, if they want something, they're gonna eventually lose something.
They're working the same number of, of hours within that...
They're working forty hours. Congratulations. That's what they want, forty hours. If they want Friday off and it's a holiday, I don't know very many other people that have a Friday off that gets paid for a holiday if they're off. They're off! We're, we're amending a contract now. I motioned that we tabled this, worked the bugs out of it, and then bring it back.
Point of order.
We already got a motion on the floor that I need to step back on.
Motion on the floor has been seconded.
Point of order, so you can't debate something, table a motion and then make the motion afterwards, because no one else can.
Okay, then postpone. Whichever, take it back, work the bugs out of it, bring it back to the table. However, however the wording goes, let's pull this back, work the bugs out of it, bring it back to the table.
Yeah, okay.
So, what is the motion?
Motion's to postpone, to work the bugs out.
And city staff will just need to know what the bugs are to work out.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not clear what the bugs are.
Right off from the get-go, we're trying to figure out the holiday thing. I mean, there's, we got, how many other little things are we gonna have to talk about tonight on this one topic?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that wasn't meant to be funny or anything. I'm honestly just asking. We need a clear directive on what the bugs are that you want us to come back with.
I think the matter of how the holidays will work, how, how the Friday holiday will, will impact, you know, working hours and floating holidays. I think that does need to be clarified, so.
We do have a very clear description of how it works right now. The bugs are if you don't like that. So, if that is the concern, if you, if you want a change and you don't like one of the, you don't like one of the suggestions in the outline that you gave to the city, because what are we telling the city? Is like, working the bugs out, us spending more time reading the packet that we've had going into this? Is that what working the bugs out is? To me, we have the information to make a decision. Let's make a decision. We have a very clear description of how holidays are gonna work if we take no action. We have three options that are clearly defined by the city that we can choose to amend this right now. And if we don't like it, then the clear directive to the city would be, we don't like how it is, we don't like any of the options you've given us, give us something else, because we don't know what we want. If that's what you mean by bugs, then okay, we can tell them that. Otherwise, we have very clear instructions in front of us that we can make a choice and decide right now. That's how I feel about this. I don't personally feel like I need to wait any longer to make a decision on this issue. We can if you're feeling indecisive about it, but I don't understand that there's bugs, because to me, that's saying that, by saying that there's bugs, that's saying that somehow the city has not done their job in presenting us with options on this item, when we have, we have a clearly defined situation currently and three other options that are also clearly defined.
Counselor Gaim?
I, I'm sure, I'm not sure what the rush is, but, yeah, it obviously is for somebody, some people. In addition to these bugs, which is which, you know, how we're gonna handle these Monday holidays, I'd like to know some statement, maybe from Human Resources, again, about the unions and whether or not, what, what might be the impact of this change, not only with their union, but other unions within the city. And I'd appreciate maybe just a few phone calls or a little research to find out, you know, if there's been other impacts at other, in other cities, and what might it cost us to give something to one group and not others?
Well, I, I think, I think I'm, I'm actually with Counselor Klepak. I, I am ready to vote. I'm in favor of, I don't know if it's one, two, or three, but I think the floating holidays, so that, that we're not closed on a Thursday and a Friday makes a lot of sense.
So, option one.
Option one.
Okay, thank you.
I agree. I think option one is, is the smartest of them. It doesn't require overtime. To me, that's, that's the clearly preferred option of the ones that the city has, has given us. In fact, I'll make the motion to...
We have to vote on the table.
Okay, let's vote.
Yeah, so we have a motion to postpone. Did that get a second?
It did.
It did.
Okay, correct. Okay, so we have a motion to postpone. Roll call, please, Patty.
Can I just clarify, so generally, when you just make a motion to postpone, it would be on the next calendar, right?
be on the next calendar, right? Are we all in agreement that postpone just the next meeting?
It would be to the next meeting unless it was a different date proposed.
Right, thank you.
Correct. All set?
Yes.
Counselor Gilli?
No.
Counselor DeBrito?
No.
Counselor Klepak?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
No.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is two in favor and five opposed, that fails passage.
Okay. Now, what we need now is an amendment to this to insert option one.
I will move that amendment.
I'll second.
And I think we've discussed option one enough, roll call on that amendment.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Why not?
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
Vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Six, six, one?
I'm sorry, six in favor, one opposed, I apologize. So, can we move that as amended now?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Any members of the public wish to say anything? Heard from everyone else, I may as well. Please.
Dan Anderson, Ward five, I'm here to complain again, but at least I get two for one tonight. City employees, part of, what they, if their hourly wage is competitive with the private sector, then what they make out is the holidays, 12 holidays. I was happy to see that the holidays and sick time were listed above the proposal here. But, you're getting 15 sick days a year, and 12 holidays a year. I work for one of the largest employers of Waterville, we get paid PTO. Our earned time has to pay for holidays, it pays for sick days, and it pays for vacation. And I've been there for nine years, my anniversary's next week, and, so I get 26 days a year, and that covers sick time, vacation time, and holidays. And we only get five scheduled holidays, you guys, city employees and municipal employees get 12. So, right there, that is a major incentive to work for a government agency. Because that, and I, my previous employer was an international corporation with 80,000 employees, and I was here for 27 years, and I had six years, six weeks of vacation, including floating holidays, but still only had five holidays a year. So, if you guys are losing employees, you're not losing them to the private sector, you're losing them to other municipalities, because it's gonna be difficult for them to give up that time. So, if you, so, maybe you should be talking to other municipalities and trying to work together to not make it such an easy jump, you know, and another thing might be the supervisors. If somebody doesn't like where they're working, maybe there's a supervisor in a certain department that people don't get along with, and maybe that's an issue. But, I can't support this at all. You guys are, the city employees are working for us. The only way I can support this, I should say, is if it's a major savings for the city. But, if I get paid on a Friday and I have to register my car on Friday, I want to be able to register my car on Friday. If I wanna, or maybe I have some other things to do, I'll take the day off. And if I, maybe I can take the Friday off so I can get along weekend too. So, I don't know, I just think, you're, the money that you rely on for payroll comes from us. It doesn't come from items you sell, or, you know, a company can increase their income by increasing sales, but the only way you guys can increase income is by raising taxes. And, really, I seriously hope you don't come for a third year in a row with a tax increase on us. So, I do appreciate city's employees, city employees, and I don't want to say anything against them, but I'm just saying that this is, you know, if a Friday, if they're not there on Friday, if it's a business, we can go somewhere else, but when it's municipality, we have no choice but to come here, so.
Thank you, Dan. Nancy?
Just my question.
Just a thought that I've had, as I've listened, and I am somebody who worked for actually eight-hour days, so I was very lucky to do it with 32. But, after, if it goes through, and after the trial period and the assessment, if the citizens hate it, and the employees love it, good luck on trying to roll it back. It's just a thought that I have.
Sir?
Ryan Tibbetts, Ward four, please forgive me, I'm not entirely up to speed on all of this discussion here, but I'm curious, had any consideration been given to the idea of a half-day on Saturdays? Like, eight to noon? Has that been posited by anybody?
I don't think so.
Yeah. The answer's no.
The answer's no. Okay, I merely wanted to throw that out there and let you guys have at it. Enjoy.
Thank you. Counselor Finch?
So, I'm not gonna make this an amendment, but, you know, I do agree with Counselor Gagnon that I think it would be good for the council to have some information on what the proposed impact on other unions and other bargaining would be.
I agree, I think this will set a precedent, and, you know, it could be, the impact could be bigger than we realize right now. So, I think that's a good idea.
Well, to be fair, I mean, this is not the first union we've done this with, right? Police and Fire have already switched in the city, so currently, right now, we have members of the city that are already operating at a four- or three-day schedule that other members of the city aren't. So, this would be the third one, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know of any others that are doing it, so this would be the third one that we would, fourth, what was the third one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, correct, yeah, sorry, don't mean to forget them, they're great. But, so, yeah, we're already operating that with other departments within the city currently. Counselor Klepak.
And, to this point here, you know, if other city employees look to this program and say, oh, that's appealing, right? Well, that's kind of the point, right? It's kind of the point. That is, to me, an indicator of success. So, how does it interact with future negotiations with those? It gives us, it would give the city another bargaining tool, like, it would give us more leverage in those, in those negotiations, if this is successful. If it fails miserably, then it's not gonna interact with union negotiations much, because they're not gonna want this, like, failed initiative. That's my perspective.
All right, I think we're ready for a roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
No.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
No.
Vote is five in favor and two opposed.
All right. Set your calendars, we'll come back in six months, eight months, and talk about it again.
Thanks, Bobby Joe.
All right, moving on to new business, Resolution 231, 2024.
Refer to the Planning Board zoning amendment, manufactured housing.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Ann, I'm gonna have you come up and just kind of set the council what this is and why it's on the agenda this evening.
Yes, we are in need of revisions to our zoning ordinance to bring it into compliance with the new state law. The law requires us to allow mobile homes in every zone in which we allow single-family homes. There are other requirements in that statute, but most of them have to do with mobile home parks, and they're just minor changes from what we currently require in mobile home parks.
And so, this is, the impetus for this is purely to harmonize with the state, and there is no business in front of the Planning Board that is, that is otherwise driving this?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Counselor Gagnon? Say, it may help, however, our people who are having troubles in some of the mobile home parks, I mean, now they have other options other than other mobile home parks, which I think there's only one left in the city, so they actually would be able to park their mobile home on a piece of land and rent from somebody, or, or leave there, yeah.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Finch?
So, does this just update, are there proposals in here for things like form-based code around certain zones, or anything like that, or is this just an update to the language?
This is just bringing us into compliance, there are few instances where we're allowed to make choices, and that's what the public hearing will address. Do we want to require larger recreation areas in mobile home parks, for example? Do we want to require a steeper pitch on a roof on a mobile home that's outside of a mobile home park? Do we want to require mobile homes outside of mobile home parks to be built over a basement so that they look more like the houses in the neighborhood?
Yeah, okay, that's what I was getting into, and so, the public hearing's gonna address some of those, like, form-based kind of questions, like, what do we want this to look?
Correct.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council? All right, wonderful, roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 232, 2024.
Approve use of funds for winter maintenance equipment, Department of Public Works.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Matt, please.
Hello, everyone. So, in the memo, you'll see that we have a positive balance remaining in the FY25 capital budget for equipment of roughly $37,000. We're proposing to purchase equipment that supports our winter maintenance program, which is salt priority, we're moving away from sand, transitioning, it won't happen all at once, but this equipment will help us store one of the key components to a salt priority program, which is brine. We're currently getting brine in Fairfield at the main Department of Transportation lot, and transporting it back to our compound with a 750-gallon transport tank. So, this gives us the ability to stockpile brine, we could use up to 2,000 gallons of brine in a given storm, depending on the duration. It's a move that we'd really like to make, we think that the salt priority program is much more effective and efficient over the long run, both with cost savings and with safety.
Counselor Klepak?
Yeah, so, I have a couple of questions for you. Number one, I think a long time ago, I had asked you, just for my own curiosity, about programs that have been, you, I think you remember now what I'm referring to, had you looked into that, or what?
We couldn't find any counselor that used beet juice. That's what you're getting at, at any scale. Beet juice can be used as an additive, and it's likely that we'll, we'll consider that as an additive to the brine when temperatures are especially cold, but we couldn't find any in the area.
Okay, 'cause my, my. Otherwise, I am entirely in support of this. My one concern is, and maybe you can speak a little bit to brine versus rock salt, my concern is, you know, the name of the town is Waterville, we have a significant number of waterways, and some biologically important ones that run through our city, and my concern, I know that the conductance, for example, in tributaries into the Mesolonski are so high, meaning that the salt content in them at different parts of the earth is so high that you can't really do Paul Chase experiments on them, and does disrupt the biology in these streams. So, I guess I just wanna, you know, moving from sand to salt, I, can you speak to this question a little bit for me? I mean, is brine less of a.
Brine is less because it adheres to the surface of the road surface, so it's less invasive, I guess, if you will, over the rock salt. So, you know, I can't speak to too many of the details about how much of the, of the salt leaches in and, you know, affects the tributaries, I don't, I don't know. I do know that dozens of municipalities are doing it. You know, okay, good. So, and the main Department of Transportation is doing it, there are just so many problems with sand, it's not, it's not effective, it's the spring cleanup that lasts for months, the hauling of the sand, and that it doesn't, it doesn't really work nearly, it doesn't work nearly as well as salt, and the brine.
Okay. Counselor Gagnon?
Can you tell us again how much money we're talking about? How much is your surplus, I should say, not just what this costs, but?
$37,000.
$37,000.
Yeah, the equipment is roughly $12,000.
That'd be nice to avoid a tax increase next fall, rather than doing this. So, this item was not in your budget, so it wasn't asked for originally.
It was a capital item, so it wasn't in our operating budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
No.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and one opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 233, 2024.
Appointment of the city clerk as registrar of voters.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Patty, or Brian, you wanna just give us a heads up?
It's required to appoint the registrar of voters every two years, in odd-numbered years, so this will be effective for July 1st.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comments, questions? Wonderful, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 234, 2024.
Approve creation of impact task force.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, all right, we're gonna get into this, you put this on the agenda, so I'm gonna let you start.
Okay.
I will say, I'm gonna just get out ahead of this now, so, members of the public absolutely have opportunity to speak. Again, we're gonna go back to when we talk about the rules of the council, you'll have three minutes to talk about what's on the agenda, which is the creation of the task force, so as you, as we get ready to call, and you just let me know, enforce the three minutes, and get everybody the opportunity to speak with regard to this topic, so. Counselor Finch?
All right, so, I debated whether or not to put this on the agenda, cloture was very fast last week, and ultimately, I did put it on the agenda, I know there's conversations happening in the community, and I felt it was important to have something on the agenda that we could discuss, you know, I know, well, first and foremost, you know, I think as a council, we need to decide if we would like to have the city formalize and create a task force to address, just pretty much address things that the city can actually take action on, I'm just trying to avoid just having conversations for the sake of conversation's sake. I will admit, though, that this was a very rushed motion, you know, some of the language isn't quite up to par. You know, some of the language isn't quite up to par. And I, I know from, from what counselors Klepak and Green have, have handed out to us that they would like to bulk up some of the tasks for the task force. And so I guess I, I think we should do this. I think having the task force, I think the city taking over, well, I don't want to say taking over. I think the city creating a task force that is under its control, that focuses on the actions that the city and the city council can take to have, deliver results that take care of the needs of all of our citizens is a good idea. And these tasks that were proposed get towards providing that balance between various stakeholders and individuals around the community. Some of this is, some of these tasks are work that is being done, or at least having been proposed to be done by organizations, you know, nonprofits around the city. And just, just as a reminder, these nonprofits are doing work that either the city can't or that the city won't do. They are our partners here and I think it's important to recognize that they are doing work that the city either can't or won't do. And that we can work with them to focus on things that the city can do to augment what they are doing inside of the city. You know, that, that being said, I think the council can discuss the tasks and can discuss the revised tasks. And I, I will ultimately, I think, propose that we come back in two weeks with a kind of clearly defined, not rushed proposal if we decide we would like to create this impact task force. And at that point, I'm just going to turn it over to the rest of the council.
Counsel Gilly?
So we all know that there's a problem in the city of Waterville. We all know what that problem is. This city council, since I've been here, we've had this conversation about it and it's the, the population of the unhoused. We all know that a task force already exists. If for, you know, and, and, you know, there has been multiple conversations in regards to try and, try and, I guess, for a lack of a better word, fix it. But unfortunately, that, that is quite easier said than done. You know, there's, there's concerns from both sides of the argument. So if for this task force to be successful, you know, and if the city were to absorb an already, is that what I'm assuming, that the city will absorb an already existing task force that already, that's already doing work in meetings and, or is this going to be separate?
So this would be separate and I think it would be up to, the city does not control the existing task force.
Correct.
So we cannot mandate that we are taking over a task force. We cannot mandate that people be on it. We can't do anything with that because we don't control it. This would give us a task force that is controlled by the city to, to address things directly in terms of, again, action that the city can take.
Which I, which I think is fine. I mean, if, but, but if we can, you know, I'm all for, you know, a collaborative, constructive conversation about finding solutions, then, then I'm, I'm good with that. And I'm also good with the fact that if we make that decision, and I understand that obviously we're not making a decision today, but if a decision is made to create this task force that is going to be run or, you know, and by, by the city, to work in, I would like to see it work in, you know, conjunction with the, with the already existing one. I think that would, I think that would make sense. But any conversation that leads towards a solution, I think, isn't a bad thing. So, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm cool with that.
Counsel Green?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very glad that we're having this discussion and I think it's an extremely important one. It, as Counselor Gilly points out, it's one we've been having on the sidelines for quite some time. However, it's not just a Waterville problem. And I, I think that, so I think it's actually an opportunity for us as a city to do something that's much more holistic and comprehensive than what we've been doing. And I would like to get away from the language of sides because I think we are all on the same side, which is we want to reduce homelessness in Waterville. So the question is, how do we do that? And what, what role can the city play in leading that effort with its partners? Again, Counselor Finch so rightly said that the social service agencies in our, in our community are extremely important. And without them, we would, we would be in a very different place. So I've talked, I've also had a lot of conversations, we all have, which, which is good. Counselor Klepak and I kind of put our heads together and came up with an amplified proposal for, for a task force that would be, I would say, led by the city, not so much as controlled. But, and really picking up on some of the themes that, that Counselor Finch identified, which are, you know, reducing the need for multiple calls from the police department, for instance. The, the quality of life issues that people have experienced in, in Waterville with being asked for money or, or stumbling on situations that they shouldn't have to witness, et cetera. But solutions for transitional housing. But I think what we would like to do is frame this as, like I said, an opportunity. And I don't know if you want to read that, that first paragraph that you so eloquently crafted, but the first goal would be, yeah, to harmonize social services with revitalization goals, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to read some of this. I, you know, my thought, I, I appreciate Counselor Green that you drew our attention to the language that we're using, not using language of, of sides because it is not about sides. I also, myself, I have a little bit of a problem describing it, the homeless as a problem.
Problem, right.
I, I think of people experiencing homelessness as people. They are people. And for me, any approach that does not have a human or person-centered approach to it that is not leading with empathy and compassion, empathy and compassion are not mutually exclusive with responsibility, both social responsibility and economic responsibility, responsibility to all of our, our citizens. So, yeah, it's important that we're mindful of how we speak of this, this situation. Yeah, the, I've written a lot about this and I've shared it mostly with, with Counsel Green. But, yeah, harmonizing social services with revitalization goals. I'd like, I'd like the task force to recognize that economic development and social, robust social services are not mutually exclusive, rather mutually interdependent. One depends upon the other. And that supporting each other and support one another in creating a thriving community. We need to reevaluate ordinances as, as Counselor Finch has called for relating to social services, but also ordinances related to zoning, to ensure that they align with both community revitalization initiatives and the compassionate support of our vulnerable populations, right? And I outlined a number of action steps. We outlined a number of action steps together. Yeah, I, I don't, this is like...
If I could just add to that, some of the elements of this, if, should the council decide to go ahead and approve this task force, would be including the current task force that exists, which is, is using data, real-time data, to identify who is, is homeless, how they can be helped, what services they're getting, and to use the, the resources of social service providers and municipal staff. I think one of the proposals that has come up is to expand that by inviting business members and I would say school officials as well, who also see this issue from a different point of view. That would be one element. So expand the current task force and to include a wider range of, of stakeholder perspectives. Work on a public-private partnership for transitional housing. We had an idea that has already been explored by this community for master leasing, which we can revisit or, or try something similar where landlords are engaged to provide housing with support from social service leaders. A public engagement component, which would involve listening sessions for a broader range of citizens. One thing that I've heard frequently is that there are many, many people in this community who want to be involved. Let's give everyone an opportunity to do what they can and, you know, work together to solve this problem. It's not going to happen with, because of a nine-member task force. It's going to happen because a community is mobilized. And, and then a plan for community resilience, which considers recovery, mental health, you know, transportation as elements that are tied to stable housing. So, you know, this, this is, again, a document that we only came up with this today, so counselors haven't had a chance to review, but I really hope that we will take a look at it and, and really be bold and take a holistic and comprehensive look at this very difficult challenge that we have, which is important for our community to be whole.
Yeah, and, you know, I just want to add and say, of course, I've only had this for two hours, but it does incorporate all of the tasks that are in the original, in the original memo, and I think adds a lot more about the community resiliency, the kind of partnership, civic partnership, and stuff like that. I, again, though, I want the focus or would like, well, it's just, it's a language thing. I, I like what's here. I think this is a good, both of these are kind of a good stepping stone. I do think some of the language in this needs to be firmed up just a little bit to turn it into actual actionable items. But, you know, on the whole, it's, it's, it's a good document. I guess I would, it's unfortunate the public doesn't have this right now. The only thing they have is the, the tasks in front of them. But just, just even, I, I'd like to at some point open this up to the public and I guess just say, like, you know, the, the memo has been public and what, if anything, do they think is missing from there that they would like the city to focus on and potentially add to this task force?
Yeah, just to the point of the concreteness of the actions in there, you know, Counsel Green and I were going for brevity as, you know, you can already see that it's bulky. And so I have eight pages in front of me of much more concrete action items that involve all kinds of things, like, yeah, social impact bonding, which is something the city has never explored. But this is able to attract private investment by offering return investment that's tied to the successful outcome of whatever project that it's going to fund. And those investors only get a return when the, when the project achieves specified social impact goals. And it, that aligns the financial incentive of the investor with the community benefits, you know, so finding a way to, to pay for projects without necessary tax dollars. And there, there, you know, there's zoning reforms such as like density bonuses or, or inclusionary zoning policies that we could consider, right? So I, I think there are a lot of things, and this is, and this is me cutting myself off, right? I could, I could keep going with a lot of this stuff. I think there's a lot of work for this task force to do. There are a lot of people that have been working on it, but it is about a coherent, coordinated, collective approach to the problem, to the question of whether, you know, expenditure of resources, both human and, and capital resource on this, is, is somehow antithetical to economic development, quite, quite the opposite, quite the opposite to that. And there have been numerous studies that have shown that, right?
Well, so Flavias had...
I'm done. I can, I don't need to talk all day. There's a lot of people that want to talk.
I don't, I just wanted to point out that Flavias had her hand up.
Yeah. Counsel DeBrito?
Hi, so sorry, I couldn't be there today because this topic really kind of, like, it really kind of sparked something else for me. So I'm looking at, like, so I've been in the council for about five years and every time we talk about like housing issue, right now we're talking about impact, like creating an impact force, but we never talk about bringing the people to the table that are actually impacted by the issue. So we're talking about a CHIRIO, like bringing professionals in, but we never bring impacted people. So I've been sitting on the KBCAP board for a really long time now, also sat on EduCare City Council, not City Council, but the council over at EduCare, and we always had impacted people on the table, all the time. Even like, even as an advocate, impacted people are always on the table. With this proposal, I see no impacted people. So it's like we're talking about impacted people, but we're not bringing them in to find out what the issue or what they are struggling with. It's like, how can we go by, by assumption? Oh, they're going through this, they're going through that, they're going through all of this, but without knowing and hearing directly from them and having them on the table. And that's the only thing, concern that I'm having with this issue. It's like, we keep talking about it, talking about it, but I don't see it going anywhere without bringing impacted people in the room. And that's a big concern to me. And that's my, like, my little...
So Flavia, I'm, I'm just wondering if you're going, if you're looking at the document that Tom and I put together because that is an element that's in this plan, which, I mean, it doesn't explicitly say, but, but, you know, having a, a, a community conversation that includes perspectives of impacted people.
Can I just ask a question?
But we can be having a community conversation and having impact people listen in. Impact people need to be on the table. Because being a part of the city council, the only reason why I ran is to be that impacted voice on the council.
So just...
But we, we don't have an impact person on the council. And when we are drafting these language, we, we need to specific say that, we need impacted people, impacted people's voice on the table. Because right now, we're excluding them.
So when you say at the table, I just want to, I want to make sure that I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
Are you talking about on the task force?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Yep.
On the task, because the input is reality. The input is what they're actually going through, not just one person, but a number of factor of them. An impacted person doesn't necessarily mean somebody that's unhoused at this moment. It may be somebody that went through the unhoused process or other issues that's going around. And also too, the unhoused issue that we're going through, it's tied in with, with legal services. There's a lot of people, it's tied in with income. So it's not just one specific... So, it's not just one specific thing when we talk about the unhoused or the impact. It's actually, it's it's a broad area of resources that this community needs, and we're not talking about that because we're not inviting the people to the table.
Okay.
Councilor Gaggen, did you have a comment?
I guess I just didn't understand. I don't, we have a motion before us on your proposal. We've been talking about another proposal. Is that is that an amendment that you're adding, that you're proposing, or? I guess I don't understand where we are.
I think.
If you folks are opposed to this current motion on the floor, or do you want to amend it?
I think, well, I think everyone I've talked to agrees that we we need to ultimately postpone a vote on this motion until we can have this these discussions and come up with something that's really more carefully considered, so. So, you know. Yeah.
I would second that as well, you know.
Are you seconding a motion? Do you make?
Well, no, I don't want to make, I don't think it's a formal motion, because I think we should, we need to continue to have a conversation here, but.
Right. We need to hear from people, and then and then I think I will move that we postpone the vote on this resolution until next meeting.
We're, to clarify, we're not opposed to what is on the table. We simply believe that it needs refinement.
Yeah, we just need to put out the language.
This is, this is a topic that requires deep thought about the language and the meaning of the language that we're using, right? And so, we made an attempt at, you know, doing that so that it's, it is a collective effort. There's work that you've done, you've worked with other members of the community. We want it to be a collective effort of the council in partnership with all kinds of stakeholders that are here in the community, that are that are on the front lines doing the important work of of building community, building real community.
So, the current motion is to postpone?
Nope, I have not made any motion yet.
I thought I heard that motion. So, we're still debating his proposal.
Correct, but I was clarifying, you asked a question, and I was clarifying that question. I don't know, did I? You asked if we were opposed, and I said, we're not opposed to what's on the table.
I guess I'm just being a little picky about process.
Sure.
In that usually, you don't discuss things that aren't on the table. What's on the table is his proposal, and you guys want to discuss something different, I guess, or someone's changed that, so.
Can I make a motion to postpone this until the next meeting?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Yeah, why don't we wait?
Yeah, I would, yes, I would like to hear from the public, too. Definitely want to postpone this.
All right. Let's open it up to the public. Anybody wish to speak at this point to, with regard to, I know you haven't seen this that we've got this afternoon, but certainly, anything that's been out in the public already. If you wish to make a comment, that would be great. We would love to hear from you.
I very much like the idea of the existing task force, and if the city feels the need to get into it, that that task, that it be one task force, if the task force that exists now is agreeable to that. I also think if indeed the city does form a task force, that there need to be minutes, and that I like Rebecca's idea of, you know, listening sessions, which might mean that the public could come and listen to the task force meetings. And I have also heard the word homeless and unhoused, and I certainly agree with Flavia that, you know, impacted people need to be on the task force, absolutely. And I lost it. The, oh, yeah, the, we're looking, and I've heard this, too, but it's all the issues and concerns we have for folks that live on the margins, so to speak. It's not just housing. It's, you know, mental health, it's drug, it's also just not having enough money to live. And so, I think it needs to be very broad focused, and I think that's what I'm hearing. So, I I'm not sure that I think that it needs to be a city based task force. You know, I would like to think that the city and the task force that now exists could just get together and act as one and come up with whatever it is, you know, the tasks and that sort of thing, together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm thinking of this situation as.
I'm sorry, first, name and where, what ward you reside in?
I'm Leah Girarden, and I don't know what ward I'm in. Ward four.
She tells you ward four.
Thank you. Ward four. I also think there's a sense of urgency right now, and there's almost two parts. There are people right now, it's winter, there are people right now that are living outside, and I don't know what the city is doing, if anything, to make sure they're safe and actually live through the nights. And then there's the longer term, which we also need to be dealing with, but I'm really concerned about where we are right now with these people, and if there's anyone or any any group of people in the city, maybe it's the police force who are checking in to make sure these people are okay.
Thank you. Okay. Rev. Mo.
Rev. Mo, and I'm in ward two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. So, I'm not opposed to the task force, but I want to throw out these ideas.
Sure.
I've heard you bandy around, you're talking about, you know, problems, you're trying to solve something, but I don't know what, that you've really identified it. I think from what I've read, and it's certainly not the complete draft that you have put together, it seems rather nebulous, it doesn't seem very specific, and so I think that, and it appears to try to tackle too many things. That would be my first impression, is this a little overly broad? The second thing I would bring up is, first, you want to identify what the problem is you're trying to solve. All right, so you're talking about solutions, but nobody here tonight has said what is the problem specifically. I think we all know what it is, it's kind of the elephant in the room, but the title of it, impact, I guess that raises the question in my mind, who do you think is making the impact? And is that a targeted group? So, who is it you're exploring as being, is the impact of what? So, if you're putting this together, it would just be my suggestion that you narrow this, and you, you know, you bring it into a narrower focus and identify these things. So, and I just can't imagine a task force actually having any success when it's as broadly drawn as it appears to be drawn now. And so, I think it should be narrowed down. I think you need to identify what problems you're trying to solve, what is the goal, what's the mission statement of the task force, but you need to identify, and carefully so. When you just say impact, the impact on Waterville, somebody's making an impact. You're not studying the impact of business. You're not studying the impact of Colby College. You're studying the impact of an identified group of people that seem to be seen as problematic by a broad section of the community. They may or not, they may not be true. One of the things that, when I first looked at this, and you know I did closely when it first evolved, was that, are we asking, are we actually looking at a crime study? Is that what we want? Should this be more, should that be a separate issue? Because there's a lot of talk about, oh, somebody's, you know, panhandling at the concourse. Well, that's a police issue, and a person could be housed in panhandling. A person could be from somewhere else in panhandling. I don't even know if that's a crime. I mean, loitering usually is. But anyway, so are we dealing with felonies? And what kind of crimes are we dealing with? Is this just a broader issue?
Ten seconds.
That people want to go to dinner and not see these other people? I don't know. So, that's why I'm looking for more specificity, and I hope we can accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, can I just add a point of clarification? I believe that there was an amendment to the name of this task force, homelessness response. Is that right?
Yeah, we haven't entertained any amendments on it tonight.
Okay, well, anyway.
Patty, the the resolution is formally as it appears in the agenda, is that?
Correct.
Yep. My name is Emmanuel Paris, sir, I'm from ward four. Is there anything else I need to, social security number, no, no, okay. Yeah, well, first, I just want to compliment you all. I feel like I've watched some good civic discourse with people disagreeing with one another in a polite way. I think that is an awesome thing to watch. I don't come to a lot of these, because this thing went on and on and on, and so I compliment you on that, too, really, I mean, wow. But what I wanted to say was, I really liked what the last person said about specificity, and Councilor Green, you mentioned a website, Zero Build.
Build, Build for Zero.
Build, and and it's it's programs all over the country that are working on it. We're certainly not the only, you know, town and state that has this issue. I'm really in favor of stealing good ideas, and one of the things that they brought up in terms of what the last person was saying is, talking about unhoused people as a group is ridiculous, because that would be like talking about housed people as a group, and housed people are pretty different one from the other, right? So, you have vets that are having trouble, you have people with substance abuse, you have, and that specificity just all of a sudden seems to me like it really makes sense in terms of a broader goal. You're not talking about this big group, you're talking about people that make up that big group who have particular issues. So, I appreciate the time and effort that you're putting into looking at this, and it is a huge issue, and we'll only be able to control so much of it, but to make the good effort is to do the right thing, so, thank you.
Emmanuel, thank you. Karen.
Karen Heck, ward six. So, I agree with everything pretty much that's been said, but one of the things that always kind of leaves me wondering is why sometimes there's not more public knowledge or input, not input, but, so we know, okay, so what? There are 28 people who are unhoused, and they're unhoused because they choose to be unhoused, or they're unhoused because the police haven't been able to get them, or the mental health? I mean, there's, there could be a description of the problem, which I think some people know, that would help. I think that it would be good to have a clear objective and to to find out from other cities what they're doing, and interestingly, I've heard that Augusta is actually looking at Waterville, because Waterville's done a good job, and we have done a good job, and nobody talks about that. We hear three people complaining about this, and all of a sudden, you know, we have to jump to what whatever that notion is, and and there's not an opportunity to really say what it is that's happening. We have amazing opportunity, cooperation here among social service agencies and with the police and with the the homeless shelter and with the soup kitchen, and it's it's not known, and it's not known how people can interact, and we absolutely need to have people at the table who are, we're concerned about and have the experiences that we know need addressing. Okay, so the only other thing I would say is, I hate the idea that this is a task force, because task forces often get their work done, it gets put on the shelf, and nobody hears it again. But Waterville actually went through a process 25 years ago where the community was engaged, and and we now have, you know, we went through another process that got us converge and create as a model. So, maybe a convergence with creation around whatever task it is we're going to do would be a more inviting and interesting process to bring the people to the table who who need to be there, and whether or not it's also always open so people can come and participate or listen is, it can all be decided, but please, please don't call it a task force, it's just, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone online, Patty?
No.
Okay, sure, you want to get, thank you, thank you for reminding.
So, it was requested that this comment be read from Steve Soul. Dear City Council, I would like to thank you for all the efforts and time you put in to help our city be the best it can be. Everyone, once in a while, we must step back and ask, how are we doing? The homeless situation and services are expanding exponentially compared to area communities. This problem is too important for seven council members to decide. Honestly, no one has solved the homeless crisis, and you won't either, as it is nationwide. I would suggest that the city survey the businesses and as many citizens in Waterville, as well as the police and rescue, to collect accurate data to make a smart decision on how to go forward. One of the questions needs to be, do you support and stand behind the city in maintaining and perhaps expanding care to the homeless? I think each questionnaire should be simple and require a name and ward they represent. Regardless of the outcome, what is here now would stay. The shelter, warming center, and lighthouse would stay, but a hold put on expansion. This would be city government working effectively. If you are headstrong that anyone coming into the city should get help, yet most of your ward does not, you would be morally obliged to vote representing them. Of course, the same could be said if your ward was in favor. Is it too much pressure for seven people to deal with a problem that is making the news across the state? Let hundreds of citizens and businesses vote, not seven. Thank you, I wish you the best. Steve Soul.
Thank you, Patty. Okay.
I will move to postpone until our next meeting, where I imagine there will be several amendments.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion on the amendment, or the the to propose, the.
Postpone it.
Correct. Any discussion with regard? Okay.
We do have some hands raised.
Bill Mitchell would like to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you. So, I think I was probably somewhat responsible for bringing this recent round of this discussion to the to the table, so I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. I do acknowledge, and I think it's great that there is an existing task force. My impression is that existing task force doing a great job representing, very importantly, the unhoused and food insecurity community. The the idea behind the new task force would be that this new task force would represent the city of Waterville, and. the city of Waterville, and would be made up of a group of people that would look at it from the city's perspective. That doesn't mean detrimental to homelessness and food insecurity, but from the city's perspective, and it would be led by the city manager, who you all hired to run the city, and, and, and two or three of the key staff on the city, who again, you all hire to address these issues. Let the professionals who run the city do their job. Now, the concept behind this, this approach was that this task force would do all of what you all have been talking about, addressing, harmonizing homelessness and food insecurity with revitalization, to bring empathy and compassion, to question anybody's support or compassion for homelessness and those who are food insecure is, is really a disservice to the community, simply because I am risking the, my neck to speak out about this and try to bring this conversation to the table and then be villainized or criticized is just not fair. And, and, and I'm happy to rattle off many things that I've been involved with and have supported that can validate my concern and care for our most vulnerable and needy. But this task force would build community, and would help transition competing interests to positive synergies that, that would include economic development, housing. Rebecca, you know I brought that idea to you about this public-private housing idea, and I hope you decide finally to try to advance that. And other needs of the city, infrastructure, public safety, while meeting the needs of our most vulnerable. We can do all of this together without compromising any of it. But the reality is, the city, the police department has received 1,700, 1,700 calls in the last 11 months related to the homeless shelter, the soup kitchen, and the 27 people who are unhoused in the city of Waterville. 1,700 calls! That is not okay. They're breaking into buildings, they're chasing women to their cars, they're pounding on windows. They are performing sexual acts in parking lots. We need to have a conversation about this. The city needs to lead this. Don't leave it to anyone else. Let the city leadership, bring in the three organizations, the homeless shelter, the soup kitchen, and KVCAP, the largest social services agency. They know social service in Waterville better than anybody does. And the last thing I'll say, because I know I've gone over, and Karen Heck, you'll remember this, we've done collaborative projects, like bringing together the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and the City Municipal Pool. Extremely difficult, extremely controversial, very complicated, we did it, and look what we created. Waterville creates very similar approach, and most recently, the revitalization of our downtown. If we allow our experts to come together in this initial task force, and then reach out, and Flavia, to your point, bringing in people who are experiencing this-
Thank you.
These experts represent those people already. Then-
Thank you, Bill.
Once we have a plan, we bring more people in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Patty, online?
Yes.
There's a motion on the floor, right?
Yeah. Katie Spencer White.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry, I couldn't be with you this evening. Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can.
Wonderful. I'm sorry, I couldn't be with you. I'm unwell today. I did want to take a minute, just very quickly, to reassure folks of the community that Minman Homeless Shelter and Services is now operating, our winter warming center, we have a no-turnaway policy, so anybody who requires a safe place to sleep at night will be given that at our Colby Street location. We've made that commitment for the last three years, and that's one of the key reasons why we're the only city in the state that has had no unsheltered homelessness for several years in a row. I also wanted to endorse the idea of a city-led task force. It's something that I have been talking about and encouraging for a very long time now. So I welcome Counselor Finch's efforts in this area, and I do also want to support Counselor De Brito's suggestion that we need to have people with lived experience at the table. And I also agree with Rev. Mo that we really need to have a, if the issue is, how do we prevent and end homelessness for the city of Waterville, we need to stay fairly narrow-focused on that, at least for some period of time, in order for us to craft solutions to really solve that particular problem. You know, we've been at this work at Minman Homeless Shelter and Services for a lot of years. We are one of the highest-performing homeless services agencies in the state. We're far more than a shelter as well. That's just one of many programs that we have. And I want to encourage people in the community, if you want to learn more about what we do, please don't hesitate to reach out. And I look forward to seeing where this new task force will go with city leadership, because it's something that has been missing, and it's most welcome.
Thank you, Katie. All right, anyone else?
No.
All right. Motion on the table to postpone two weeks to the next meeting. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor De Brito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Gagnon?
Yes.
Counselor Finch?
Yes.
Counselor McCormick?
Yes.
Vote a seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you very much. And with that, I undertake a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Wonderful.